And welcome to the organizational meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It's Monday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Who knew that two thousand and twenty-four was a real number for a year? It's two thousand and twenty-four. We are in the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. It is six P M. We'll call the meeting to order. First up is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to consider and adopt the agenda.
So move second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or anything? And student reps, Kiran, Molly, we don't have an update for students or the student reps tonight. However, this would be a good time if you do have anything that we could add. If you have any updates that you want to give.
No, that's all right. I know we're gonna be quick tonight, so that's okay. We can maybe wait and give a longer update on the next day.
On the eighteenth?
If that works, then we'll talk. Okay, sounds good.
It'll be a double time next time. Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. We need to do Oath of Office for new members of the school board. Rita Rasbach and Ken Russell, welcome to the board.
Tracy.
Oh. They have to do as well.
Yes.
Welcome back, Tracy Stewie. Welcome back, Bill Cowan. So I have a little thing to read here, and then we will do the oath. So it is an honor that you -- this is from the Minnesota School Boards Association. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of your community's children. As you recite the Oath of Office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. As a board, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. So if you would, please stand. And raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
Of independent school district number five zero eight.
Of independent school district number five zero eight.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. Welcome to the board and welcome back to the board. All right, next up, election of officers. We have chairperson, vice-chairperson, clerk, and treasurer. And these officer roles are filled by members of the board through a nomination process. The first up is the chairperson. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Charlie Potts.
I was gonna quit.
I was, I didn't even finish my sentence. Any other nominations? Any other nominations for chair? Does the nominee accept the nomination? Yes, I accept the nomination. We then need to vote. Do we have to do a motion or just a straight vote?
There's just one, so you can do it by acclamation.
So by acclamation.
I don't know if you can acclaim yourself.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
All right.
Just take a vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you all for your confidence and trust to be the chair again this year. Next up, vice-chairperson. Do we have any nominations for the vice-chairperson?
I nominate Drew Dixon.
Do we have any other nominations? And for the third time, any nominations? Drew is our only nominee. Drew, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Then through acclamation.
Then through acclamation, you are the vice-chairperson. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You've been acclimatized.
I don't know.
Next up is clerk, the clerk position. Do we have any nominations for the clerk position?
Well, I nominate Kate Martins.
Okay.
For clerk position.
Nomination for Kate Martins. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? I nominate Tracy Stewie. For the clerk position. So we have two nominees. Do both of you accept the nominations?
Yes.
Kate Martins?
Yes.
Tracy, accept. And then you both have an opportunity before we would vote, since we have multiple nominees, if you wanted to speak to your interest in the clerk position. Kate, would you like to go first?
I have enjoyed being clerk. That's all.
Well, this is interesting because I didn't know about this part of the meeting, but I guess I'm the clerk for the M Fed Board. It's a leadership position. I've been on the board for four years. I like visiting with Sarah. I don't know what else to say.
Cool. Okay, so then what do we do?
Now, I get paper. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for this.
Sorry.
And.
I think you can just go around and ask.
Can you?
Yeah.
Because you have to record the vote.
Yeah.
And anyone who reads minutes has to know who voted for whom, so.
It just depends if they wanted it to be a private vote or not.
Well, can.
I can't, we have to be recorded as each and board member voting for someone.
Right. Technically, they can be read out loud afterwards if you want it, but voting out loud.
Still have to identify the person by name, so you'd have to write your name on ballots.
So vote.
So we go around and say the name of the person? Okay.
Kate Martins.
Kate Martins.
I'll vote for Tracy.
Tracy Stewie?
I guess Tracy Stewie.
Two strong candidates after due deliberation. Kate.
Without really knowing, I guess, what's happened, I think I'll go with Kate, who has been clerk so far.
The vote would be four votes for Kate, three votes for Tracy.
Okay. Kate Martins. Congratulations. Treasurer, do we have nominations for treasurer? I nominate Bill Cowan, treasurer. Any other nominations?
Well, I was gonna nominate Ken with his financial background, but I don't know if he wants it. I didn't get a chance to ask.
You know, I've done that in the past, and I very much enjoyed it, and I'd be interested in the future. I would like a year or so to gain more experience and get up to speed. So I thank you, but I respectfully decline at this point.
So then, the third time, any other nominations? Bill Cowan, do you accept the nomination?
I will accept it.
Okay. Then by acclamation, congratulations, you are the treasurer. All right, thank you, everyone. We need to, next up is designate depositories. This is the list of banks with whom we do business. So you're looking for a motion. Can we do them all at once? Yes. So we have eight different institution, financial institutions listed. First National Bank of St. Peter, Pioneer Bank of St. Peter, Hometown Bank of St. Peter, CCF Bank of St. Peter, U S Bank of St. Paul, Wells Fargo, South Point Financial Credit Union, and MSD L A F, our MSBA investment program. So we have those eight institutions with which we do, with whom we do business, so we can accept a motion for all.
As the newly elected treasurer, I will move to designate these parties as depositories.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions?
I'll just speak to the reason that there are eight different financial institutions. One, we try to provide some business to all of our local banks when we're doing our banking. And we are only allowed to have so much money in each bank up to an insured amount, and we can't go above that amount, so we need more than one institution. And that is why we have eight on the list.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to designate these depositories signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now need to designate the official newspaper of the school district. Currently, it is the St. Peter Herald.
I move that we designate the St. Peter Herald as our official newspaper.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to designate the St. Peter Herald as the official newspaper of the district. So motion and a second, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. St. Peter Herald is our official newspaper. Next, we need to designate the auditor for the school district audit. Currently, it is Abdo Ike. Ike and Meyer.
I move we approve the designation of the auditor of the school district as Abdo Ike and Meyer.
Second.
I have a question.
Sure, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, questions?
Is this something that we're required to ask bids on or not?
It is not, because it is a service. I would say that Abdo Ike and Meyer probably do a huge percentage of school districts throughout the state.
Mr. Chair, I'm assuming that they've been in audit in the past several years?
Yes. Any other discussion or questions?
So are these the people who didn't find that error that our new business manager found?
Well, when an auditor is doing an audit, it is not, they don't go through every line. They are looking for processes and general accounts. So it would be something that could be missed by any auditor.
Any other discussion or questions? We have a motion and a second to designate Abdo Ike and Meyer as the auditor for the school district. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next. Say his, her.
What?
We need to designate business manager or her designee to continue to make wire transfers for the school district. This would be Megan Gracia or her designee.
I'll make a motion to designate business manager or her designee to continue to make wire transfers into the school district.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions? We will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Designated the business manager or her designee to continue to make wire transfers for the school district. Next, we need to designate the superintendent to approve non-resident student agreements.
I so move.
I second.
Motion and a second. Very quick on that one.
All right.
Any discussion or questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations Superintendent Gronseth. You can now continue to approve non-resident student agreements.
It's one of my favorite things to do.
Only the ones coming in.
Next up, we need to set board salaries. Proposed salaries are listed below. Board officers and directors are paid a monthly stipend for the work that they do on behalf of the district. We've kept those relatively low over the years and have not adjusted much, certainly compared to some other districts.
That's very true.
Yeah, is there anything in comments or anything about that?
Are these the same as last year?
These are the same as last year. You know, they are considerably lower than most districts. I've also seen districts because, and I'll just throw this out there now, that maybe the policy committee in the future would look at changing this. I know that it can be uncomfortable, especially for new members coming in, that it is their very first meeting that this is discussed, and some districts do move this conversation to be in line with the fiscal year rather than the calendar year, so that you have this discussion in May or June, starting in July, rather than in January when everyone's in a, you know, either coming onto the board or maybe in a new role, and it can be a tough time to have that conversation. But it's on your agenda now, so.
It is now.
But perhaps in the future, we could look at moving that.
Well, and it would be nice to see once where other schools were, I mean, if you have that. Not that we're all in this to make money or anything. I don't think anybody is, but.
No, but I've seen districts with five, six times this.
Some do it by meeting. And then they rack it up with committee meeting for sure.
But with that in mind, I'll make a motion to approve the board salaries as indicated, because we don't really need to read that out loud, do we?
No.
So we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions?
I will say, if the policy committee did decide to bring this to the board as a change, you could bring it up again in June.
I think it would be wise to move it to a June timeline. It just fits better in all categories.
Yep.
Do we also, and I know that we discussed, and I don't remember if we landed on it, an additional stipend for negotiations? Because in recognition of the time commitment that that committee takes on, I thought that we had addressed that.
Policy committee and HR committee both have an additional stipend. Not that I have that with me.
Yeah, I don't remember offhand.
Yeah, I don't even.
But as long as it remains in place and we're not removing that or something, I think that's a good, a wise move.
I think it looks like a good thing to discuss in June.
Yeah.
And have some of the other districts and all that information in there for policy change.
Yeah, fair enough.
So I missed this meeting last year because I had COVID.
That's right.
But I thought the previous one, we changed all that and went to the flat stipends rather than having the extra and so forth. So I think maybe we should take a look at that.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Because I thought it was a flat fee for everyone except the chair.
I know, I did too. That's how I remember it.
No, I think we had changed them.
Yeah, there's two committees. Policy and negotiation both had additional stipends because of the amount of time that is required of them.
Right.
But I thought when we knocked the number of committees now, that we went to a straight stipend for everyone, but I, you know, I'm getting old now, so maybe don't call everything.
Yeah, I would have to check. I thought I remembered these numbers for a while, though. These weren't brand new last.
So these aren't different than, or are these?
These are not different than last year.
No.
I think they were due maybe three or four years ago. I remember something was that we lost news, but I don't remember.
I really thought last year they were all the same, but I don't know.
Yeah. They're remembered both ways.
I know that they were different.
Yeah.
Based on the offices.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
We can always change it if we find different things.
Right.
Yeah.
Sure.
The business manager might not like changing all that stuff, but we can always do it.
They'd probably appreciate it that we're in line with the fiscal year rather than the calendar year.
So we do have some information maybe to gather.
Yeah.
But then also the conversation about the policy committee looking at it in June as opposed to January.
So you could pass this for now, so that we have something in place, knowing that we'll return.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second for, as it is written on the agenda. Any further discussion? We will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we got some more. All right, next up, identify the primary legal counsel for the district. Currently, Kennedy and Graven, individuals authorized to contact, oh, Kennedy and Graven, period. Individuals authorized to contact legal counsel include the chairperson, the superintendent, and our human resources.
I think it continues on the other side.
Human Resources Administrator. The recommendation is to include Squires, Walsberger, and Mace, P A, as an additional primary legal counsel.
So we have worked with Kennedy and Graven for a number of years, but we have also sought advice from Squires, Walsberger, and Mace, and would just like to have them as a named resource for the district.
Who are they also? I've never heard of them. Not that I need to have heard of them, I'm just curious.
They're main offices are in Minneapolis, just like Kennedy and Graven. Basically, there are three firms that focus mainly on education. Kennedy and Graven happens to be one of them. Squires, Walsberger, and Mace is a second.
And do we have an agreement with them, or is it on call basis?
It's call basis.
Okay.
They're not on a retainer.
Yeah.
Or Kennedy and.
Neither one are.
Neither one.
Mr. Chair, we will move that the approval of the primary legal counsel heads online.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Kennedy and Graven, in addition to Squires, Walsberger, and Mace, have been added as primary legal counsel. Thank you. Next up, set the date, time, and place of regular board meetings and study sessions. The recommendation, similar to what we've done in the past, set regular meetings for the third Monday of the month at six thirty P M. in the governor's room of the community center. And then set study sessions for the first Monday of the month at six thirty P M. in the middle school media center. And third, set the January meeting for the first Monday of the month and the February meeting for the third Thursday of the month due to conflicts with holidays.
Isn't that supposed to be the January meeting?
Both January. Both January.
Oh, January, I gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, we had to move both, because Martin Luther King Junior and then presidents.
Yeah.
So that should read the January and February meetings for the third Thursday of the month.
So the January meeting for the third Monday of the month and the February meeting?
No. The January meeting is the first Monday of the month, this meeting, the organizational meeting. Then the regular board meeting would be the third Thursday in January and February.
The eighteenth.
The eighteenth and then February. I'm sorry.
Would it be okay to say the, set the organizational meeting for the first Monday of the month?
Yeah. Yeah.
And the January and February regular meetings?
Yes.
So set the January organizational meeting.
For the first Monday of the month, and the January and February regular meetings for the third Thursday of the month due to conflicts with holidays.
Which this year happens to be February twenty-second.
Twenty-second, thank you.
Unless we move it.
I move that we set those days and times as corrected for our regular place and time of board meetings and study sessions.
Thank you. Perfect. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So just to set it straight, regular meetings for the third Monday of the month at six thirty P M. in the governor's room. The study sessions will be the first Monday of the month at six thirty P M. at the middle school media center. We have set the January organizational meeting for the first Monday of the month, and the January and February meetings for the third Thursday of the month due to conflicts with holidays.
And are we having study sessions every month, or are those more on call?
No, they're as scheduled.
Okay.
There's a few months that we miss.
Because I would say September, probably don't have a.
Yeah.
Because that's Labor Day, right? The first.
And we don't typically have one in January.
All right. That's all the business items. We don't have an informational portion of the meeting. The only other thing we have is upcoming meetings of the school board. The business committee meets Wednesday, January tenth at four P M. in the district office. Is that still?
No.
That is, that is not.
Strike that from the right. The business committee meeting will set a meeting time for a future date. Correct. Because that conflicts with the MSBA Leadership Conference, which does begin on Thursday, January eleventh, and until Friday, January twelfth, the Minneapolis Convention Center, Superintendent Gronseth and our newest members of the board will be at the Phase One and Two training on Wednesday.
Starting tomorrow night.
Oh. Getting a whole week out of this thing. All right. But that leadership conference is at the Minneapolis Convention Center and is school board members from all over the state of Minnesota, thousands of them. And then the next regular board meeting is Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six thirty P M. right here in the governor's room. Any other things that we need to add? Upcoming meetings or other informational items?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Are committee assignments made at this time or not?
They are pretty close to final, so we do have, yeah, committee assignments. I need to talk to Superintendent Gronseth to finalize a couple of things, and then we will share that list out. We don't need to approve that list.
I understand.
We just share as an informational item at the January meeting. So we'll share it and then have an opportunity to talk if people have questions about most of the assignments, kind of stayed as they were, got feedback from all the returning board members, got you on some good assignments. So we'll share that soon, and then we can have discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We do have to schedule a couple of meetings before the board meeting, so Sarah will be in touch.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion.
If that's not too premature at six twenty-nine, so.
Yeah, we gotta be out here at six thirty.
In the spirit of Mr. Crafton.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.